Well, it's Wednesday night and here we are. It's good to be on again tonight. We did a successful community cafe at the church. I handed out a lot of Salisbury steak meals tonight. I didn't get a count just before I left. We finished our ministry that we call Lead, where we do homework help with students at the church. We finished that up last week, so I didn't need to hang around and do homework help. So I got to come home. Here I am in my study at home. And it's good to be here and good to have a PEC. We've got a few people joining us already. Let me put in a plug for things coming up at Christ Church. And before I do that, let me say this, and I'll say it again at the end. Our study next week needs to start at 6:00. And here's why. I've been asked to do the narration for the Christmas program that's going to be on December 12, Sunday afternoon. It's a four o'clock service. I'm doing the narration for that. And Christina's having kind of a dress rehearsal next Wednesday evening at 7:00. So I'll probably be doing this study from my office at church at 6:00. And then when they finish that, I'll run into the sanctuary and we'll do that rehearsal. So if you happen to come on at 7:00 next week and we're already finished, just wait a few minutes and it'll be posted on our website. You can go there and see these classes under what's called Watch and Listen on our main Christ Church website. They get posted later on Facebook as well. But this is going to be an exciting three or four weeks at Christ Church. This coming Friday night and Saturday night, we have the Triactives Concert. Willie Kitchens, who is one of our worship leaders, used to be in The Impressions, and he forms a group called The Triactives each Christmas. He and Michael Rogers from Knoxville, Doug Richardson from Sweetwater, Tennessee. And they go together along with a whole host of backup singers and musicians. And they do this kind of Motown-style Christmas concert. They'll do that on Friday night at 7:00 and then Saturday night at 6:00. It's free, but we take up an offering and the offering goes to the Bethlehem Center downtown. So come if you can. That'll be a wonderful concert. And then a week from this Thursday and Friday, we have the Rusheh Corral. They're an awesome group, Christina Malone and Tony, some other members of our choir singing the corral. It's a citywide thing and they're coming to Christ Church. We're hosting them for candlelight services next Thursday and Friday. And just keep watching our website. We'll keep announcing things. But each week we have at least one huge concert and some weeks we have more than one. The Metropolitan Bells will be at Christ Church coming up on December 16th. Gary Bynum leads that. Becky is in it. Sherry Shaver, Carol Millard, some of our... Actually, maybe Carol is not in that one, but anyhow, she's in the Christ Church one. Enough of an ad. Let's get into our lesson. I thought it might be good for us to do an Advent study. We've done several Bible studies. We did, "What Does It Mean to Be a Christian?" We talked about basic, common, shared Christian beliefs and values, things that churches across different denominations believe in. And then we did one, ah, yes, Greg says Carol is in Met Bells. Of course she is. I don't know what I was thinking. She's in the Christ Church bells, but she's also in the Met Bells. We got a lot of our folks at Christ Church are in the Met Bells. It's an incredible group. They'll play at the Tivoli with the symphony. They'll play with the boys choir. They do a ton of things around Christmas. And so we're fortunate to have them at Christ Church in a Christmas concert. Thank you, Greg, for reminding me that Carol indeed is in the Met Bells. Thought it would be good for us to do now that we've been through all those other studies, an Advent study. And when you think about Advent, the whole season of Advent is preparing for coming of the Christ. Nathan in his sermon this past Sunday pointed out that it's more than just getting ready for Christmas. It's preparing ourselves. It's being open and thinking about what does it mean to have a Messiah? What does it mean to have the Christ? And so Advent is a time for that. Each Sunday of Advent has a theme: peace, hope, joy, love. And then of course, the greatest gift being that of Christ. And so I thought, as we do each of these four Wednesdays leading up to Christmas, perhaps tonight we would do the prophets, scriptures that looked ahead and said, "There is a Messiah coming." And so we'll read those tonight and think about what they meant then and what they mean to us looking back. Then I thought it might be good to look at John the Baptist. He was the forerunner of the prophet who foretold the coming of the Christ. I picked the character of Joseph. Joseph is an interesting character to look at. In fact, I'm going to continue. I'll be preaching on December 26th and I'm going to kind of continue looking at Joseph. My sermon is "The Thing Not Done," and we'll talk about Joseph in that. And then finally, we'll study the Christmas story on December. I think it's the 22nd, the Wednesday just before Christmas. Christ the King Sunday ends the Christian year. And it happened two Sundays ago. This past Sunday was actually the first Sunday in Advent. One of the things that people from some other church backgrounds sometimes mention when they visit us or come to Christ Church is they'll say, "What do you mean by things like Advent?" And the reason they ask that is some churches don't really talk about the Christian year. They don't put an emphasis on things like Advent, Lent, the different seasons of the year. I kind of like doing that because they help us to get ready, to know what's coming. It's more than just celebrating Christmas. It's getting ready for that and preparing. I grew up in a small Methodist church over in middle Tennessee. And we really didn't talk a whole lot about Advent or Lent, those things. Sometimes we'd hear the word, but we didn't really emphasize those. We didn't have sermon series that focused on them. But I think those are helpful. There's no season of the year that involves as much preparation, as many events. It's a wonderful, happy, joyous season that we call Christmas, Advent leading up to Christmas. For many of us, Christmas, we celebrate it as a blend of two things: a holy time, a holy day, but it's also a holiday. And in the holy day, we focus on scripture and spiritual things. And the holiday, we focus more on family events. We focus on giving of gifts. That's where the commercialism of Christmas creeps in. And I'm not going to be negative at all about the holiday. There's so much about the holiday that I love. But we need to make sure that it's more of a spiritual time for us rather than just a holiday and a time for parties and getting together. I want to ask you something. When somebody says it's time to get ready for the holiday, not the holy day, but when somebody says it's time to get ready for the holidays of Christmas, what do you immediately think about needing to do? What are some of the things that you or your neighbors or people around you do to get ready for the holidays of Christmas? We'll talk about the holy days later, but right now, what do you do to get ready for the holy... I'm sorry, for the holidays, the celebrations, the time... Okay, Tom Sutherland says, "Got to get the tree. Decorate." Absolutely. "Put the wreaths on the windows." I did that on the day after Thanksgiving. Boy, I lucked out. We've gotten some new windows that open to the inside. Oh, man, I can slide those windows up, pop the suction cups on the outside. And I've got the wreaths on the windows. Decorate the home. Buy the gifts. John Ellis says decorate. Yeah. We got all kinds of things going up here at our house. We got to cook, Lori says. There are special things. I bet that Lori is going to cook. There may be cookies. My brother, younger brother Neil, sent me a picture, I think it was the Saturday after Thanksgiving, of two big fruitcakes. One, a huge round one, one of those pans that's got the stem up the middle so it makes a hole in the center of that cylindrical cake. Beautiful fruitcakes that he had just made. And he'll soak those suckers with grape juice. And that'll be part of my Christmas gift, hopefully, is to get a big chunk of that fruitcake. The cooking, the parties, yeah. Pam Bonin says the parties. And you're probably already starting to get invited to some places. Becky and I... Thank you, Lynn, for telling me what kind of pan that is. Becky and I've already been invited to a brunch that we love going to as part of Christmas. Be delicious food and good fellowship. That's kind of party. And those are all things that we do to get ready for the holidays. Now, what are some things we do to get ready for the holy days of Christmas? Christmas starts on Christmas Eve, goes Christmas Day, and it's supposed to go all the way to Epiphany, which in most churches is January the 6th. Most of us do well to celebrate the holy days till New Year's because we kind of shift and we do a New Year's Eve party or have our special meal on New Year's Day. And by that time, usually the trees down and the wreaths are coming off the windows. And so, but that whole week is kind of a holy time. What do we do to celebrate for the holy day of Christmas? Maybe I should say holy days of Christmas. Not the parties, not the holidays, but the holy days. It's part of our getting ready that we're talking about. Okay, we put out our nativity scene. Those nativity scenes, we look at them and we see the characters. We're reminded of the story of the birth of Christ. Absolutely. That's a central part of our decorations. Becky loves nativity scenes. She's got dozens of them. Ah, Christie says, "Fill the gratitude for the birth with the death and resurrection in mind." We celebrate the birth, but we know it's for a reason. And we know that it's a wonderful gift. Attend Christmas worship services. Yes, prepare for services to attend. Our church choir and churches all over, their choirs have been working on Christmas music since, I think Christina started ours, maybe in August. An Advent wreath. Thank you, John. We had the first candle lit this past Sunday. And we're doing something different this year. We're doing a short video of a child reading the Advent, kind of reading for that day. And this last Sunday was peace. And this Sunday will be hope. And we'll have a child on a video doing that. Midnight Mass, Greg says. Those are all things that we do to prepare for the coming, to be thankful for the coming, to be ready and open and welcoming to the coming of Christmas, this most holy time. Nobody mentioned doing an Advent Bible study, but this is part of it too. In our worship services, we hear sermons that point us toward Christmas, help us to prepare. We do daily devotions at Christ Church. They're sent out electronically. And those are helping us to focus on the themes, the four themes of the Sundays of Advent. All of that's helping us to prepare. Hopefully, this Advent study will as well. We're going to look back at the Old Testament times, the Hebrew scripture. We're going to be looking at a time from around 850 years before Christ to 586 years before Christ. I'm going to be reading from the prophets, and so you may want to have your Bibles handy to thumb through them and grab those. And these studies on the Advent series may be just a little shorter. If they are, don't worry about it. I normally go 45 minutes. We'll see. Israel had a climax as a nation. It just really peaked at about 1,000 B.C. David was the king. What was it like for Israel when David was king? And Israel was at its zenith. It was at the peak, the apex of its time as a nation, as a people. What was it like for Israel in those days and to be an Israelite during the reign of King David? David wasn't perfect, but he was an awesome king. And Israel did well. Saul had been the first king, started out doing well, but then was a horrible king. And David came to power, pulled the nation together. Instead of there being just 12 individual nations called tribes, he pulled the tribes together and made them into one nation. And as he did that, they became very strong. And so that's one of the characteristics. They were united. Thank you, Christie. They were together. It was a united kingdom. 12 tribes coming together to form one nation, strong. Their army, they had been delivered. Yes, their army became really, really strong. David was a good military leader. They grew in respect and power. Absolutely. Nations around them viewed them as a world power. In fact, other nations, if you went against David, he defeated you. And whenever he defeated you, he required you to pay tribute, which is like a country having to pay taxes back to Israel. So economically, they were very rich. People did well, and so it was a prosperous time. It was one of those things that later, people would hearken back to the time of David. They looked to David as the perfect king. One other thing that's important. I said earlier that David wasn't perfect. He sinned. We know about his sin with Bathsheba, about him having her husband put to death. It's a horrible thing to do. We know David sinned, but for the most part, David was a godly person. It says, "He was a man after God's own heart. Even in his sin, because of his prophet Nathan's intervention, David repented and asked for forgiveness." And because David was a godly person, he kept the nation worshiping God. He kept them focused on loving and worshiping God. So spiritually, he was actually a good leader. The nation peaked under David. Things went pretty well under Solomon. Solomon built the temple and he built himself a huge palace. He was very, very wealthy. Solomon was wise. But toward the end of his reign, Solomon had married so many women for political reasons. It's like he would defeat a country, marry the queen's daughter. Now, that country is aligned with Israel. But he had married so many women and he allowed them to bring their gods into his home. And so his children were confused. They weren't sure if they should worship God or if they should worship these foreign gods of their mothers. And that was a huge mistake on Solomon's part. When he died, his son Rehoboam took over as king and things fell apart. What was the worst thing that happened under Solomon's son? Does anybody remember? The country went into decline. Its army wasn't as strong. Other nations began to attack it. Other kingdoms began to grow stronger. Assyria was becoming the world power. Babylon was right behind Assyria. And they were threatening Israel. The worst thing that happened is the country split. It split into the northern kingdom with 10 tribes, the southern kingdom with two, and Judah and Benjamin to the south. And whenever it split, that immediately weakened it. And so now it's in a state of decline. It's spiritually weak as the people worshiped other gods. And that's when the prophets started coming. God sent prophets to say to Israel, the 10 tribes were known as Israel, the northern kingdom. And the southern kingdom just took the name of its largest of the two tribes, Judah. So Israel, Judah. Prophets would go to one or the other of those, sometimes to both, and say to them, "You need to turn back." That's where we get the phrase, "Turn or burn." The prophets were saying, "If you don't turn back, you're going to be punished. God will allow you to go into exile." And so we have this time of prophets bringing gloom and doom. If you don't turn around, you're going to be lost. You're going to be taken into exile. You're going to be defeated. And yet, kind of peppered in those prophecies of gloom and doom, come promises, promises of a Messiah. We translate that Hebrew word, "Meshua," Messiah, as Christ. So the people of Israel were being told, "Your Christ is coming. This is someone who will save you." And so I'm going to read some scriptures tonight. Look at Micah 5:1-5. I went ahead early today and marked my Bible. I have this big clip that I got at a men's conference one time, a church men's conference. A big clip. It's magnetic and you can slide it down on your Bible. And I use that to mark passages. One Sunday morning, I had my Bible marked with that, you know, just clipped it down on the passage I was going to read. And it was from some obscure book like Nahum or Habakkuk or something that's hard to find. And as I opened my Bible and reached for the page that clip was on, the clip flew out and hit on the stage floor. I remember Gary Bynum, one of our persons who lead singing, was standing and he looked at me and went, "Hmm." Man, I scurried around and found Nahum without that clip. But I felt like I was in one of those sword drills we used to do as kids. Well, I hope you have been able to do your sword drill and find Micah. This is Micah, chapter 5. And in it, the prophet Micah is promising to a nation that's under siege from the Assyrians. He's promising them something. I want you to listen. What's he promising? Where is the leader going to come from? Why does this place where the leader is going to come from make no sense at all? And why does it make perfect sense? You got all of that in these five verses. "Marchal your troops now, city of troops, for a siege is laid against us. They will strike Israel's ruler on the cheek with a rod. But you, Bethlehem Ephratol, though you're small among the clans of Judah, out of you will come for me one who will be ruler over Israel, whose origins are from old, from ancient times. Therefore Israel will be abandoned until the time when she was in labor bears a son and the rest of his brothers return to join the Israelites. He will stand in shepherd his flock in the strength of the Lord, in the majesty, the name of the Lord, his God, and they will live securely; for then his greatness will reach to the ends of the earth, and he will be our peace. When the Assyrians invade our land and march through our fortresses, he will raise against them seven shepherds, even eight commanders." Okay, somebody's already said, "The leader is going to come from Bethlehem." Yes, the prophet is promising a leader at a time when the nation is being attacked by the Assyrians. The Assyrians were to the north and east, and they were very, very powerful. They would eventually defeat the northern tribes. So in the short term, this leader is being promised that hopefully we'll save them from the exile. As it turns out, he doesn't. There is no leader that steps up. This is talking about a future time. So why does Bethlehem make no sense at all? Michael Smith says he's coming from Bethlehem. He is. Why does Bethlehem make no sense? You would expect a new king to be coming, wouldn't you, from Jerusalem? That's where the kings live. That's the mighty city. That's Zion. You know, it's built on the Mount of Zion. But instead, it's coming from this little podunk place called Bethlehem. And yet, ah, yes, Christie says it's a small town. It's kind of insignificant whenever you think about all the places. I grew up in a place called Brush Creek, a very small town. And if somebody asks you where you're from and you say Brush Creek, you've got to tell them what it's close to. And you can say, "Well, it's not too far from Nashville." Bethlehem was like that, but there was a reason why it made perfect sense for this new leader to come from Bethlehem. Somebody tell me, why is Bethlehem, and especially when we as Christians look back with 2020 hindsight, and we say, "He wasn't talking about somebody that was going to save them from the Assyrians? He's talking about the Christ, the Messiah." So why did it make perfect sense for the Messiah, the Christ, to be born in Bethlehem? Though you're small among the tribes, you know, it's a small town, it's a small place. But what made it the logical choice? Anybody know? Ah, yes, he's promised in the lineage of David. We're going to read another prophecy here just in a little bit. And it's going to tell us. It's going to tell us that Messiah is coming from the lineage of David. This time, he says, "David was from Bethlehem. It's David City." And so that makes it make perfect sense. Micah says that this leader will be our shepherd and our peace. Oh, yeah. The people at this time needed a leader, a shepherd, but they also needed a person of peace. Jerusalem was under siege. Micah mentions that. And whenever you want a ruler, you want someone who will lead you to military victory. Words like this help to confuse the people who didn't accept Jesus as their Christ. Remember that. This peace that he brings is not going to be the peace that comes after a war. It's a different kind of peace. The prophet Isaiah was at work at the same time, and he was advising a king, Ahas. Some of the prophets were kind of blue collar people. Isaiah wasn't like that. He was in the king's court. And let's go now to Isaiah 7:10-14. Let's see if I can find that one without losing my big paper clip here. Isaiah 7:10-14, I believe I said. Yeah. Let me read that. Tell me what the sign is going to be. In this passage, a sign is going to come for the king. "Again the Lord spoke to Ahas the king. Ask the Lord your God for a sign, whether in the deepest depths or in the highest heights. But Ahas says, 'I will not ask. I will not put the Lord to the test.' Then Isaiah said, 'Here now, you house of David, is it not enough to try the patience of humans? Will you try the patience of my God also? Therefore the Lord will give you a sign. The virgin will conceive and bring forth a son, and he will call him, and will call him Emmanuel.'" Wow. We grab onto that and you'll hear that read in worship, if you haven't already heard it, here during Advent. Assyria and Israel were attacking Judah at Jerusalem. You hear that? Israel, the northern kingdom, was actually attacking Jerusalem. So this is civil war that's taking place. And Isaiah says, "King, ask God to give you a sign that everything's going to be okay." Ahas refuses. And then Isaiah says, "God's going to give you a sign." And here's what the sign will be. What was it? Somebody tell me. What was the sign that is promised? It's like when this happens, you know that a ruler, a leader, is about to step forward. And I think there was probably something that happened then, in the immediate future, that helped Ahas to understand. But whether Isaiah understood that he was talking about something that would happen years later? Yes, the virgin birth. A virgin will give birth. And I think there was probably a young woman who was about to give birth right there and probably in Ahas's court. Isaiah may not have known that 600 years later, Christ would be born. Thank you all, the virgin birth. This is where we pick up on the fact that it was promised. In Matthew and in Luke, we see that the virgin was Mary and the prophecy is finally fulfilled. We're going to look on further in Isaiah 9, 6, and 7. Isaiah nine, six, and seven. Now you're where do these words? Where do you hear these? These are very familiar words for us. For to us a child is born, to us a son is given, and the government will be on his shoulders, and he will be called wonderful counselor, mighty God, everlasting Father, prince of peace. Of the greatness of his government and peace, there will be no end. Where do we hear those words? Now we hear them read in scripture. We hear them in worship. We hear them in Bible studies like this. But where else do we hear those? They've been put to music. That's a hint. Anybody remember the piece of of awesome music that that we hear those words in? It's so hard for me to wait for the time crunch to get out to you guys so you can put down your comments. And then they come up on my, oh, thank you, Lynn's already done it. Hallelujah chorus. Yes. The hallelujah chorus, those are so familiar. Again, that child that they're dreaming of, that the prophet is promising. That Messiah did not come in the time of Isaiah. It's a promise it would come later. No leader emerged with the qualities of this wonderful counselor, mighty God, prince of peace, everlasting Father. It did not happen. I wonder if Isaiah became frustrated, but Isaiah is prophesying something that will come six or seven hundred years later. I'm going to read a couple more passages from Isaiah. This is Isaiah eleven, one and two, and then I'll read six and nine. Somebody tell me what this what the meaning is of this. A shoot will come up from the stump of Jesse. From his roots, a branch will bear fruit. The spirit of the Lord will rest on him, the spirit of wisdom and of understanding, the spirit of counsel and of might, the spirit of the knowledge and fear of the Lord. And then verses six through nine. The wolf will lie down with the lamb, the leopard will lie down with the goat, the calf and the lion, and their yearling together, and the little child will lead them. The cow will feed with their young and lie. Pull this. I've got a big yellow sticky over right over that. With the bear, their young will lie down together, and the lion will eat straw like the ox. The infant will play near the cobra's den, and the young child will put its hand into the viper's nest. There they will neither harm nor destroy on all my holy mountain, for the earth will be filled with the knowledge of the Lord. So two different timeframes there. One is talking about a shoot will come up from the stump of Jesse. What is that referring to? And then this time when animals who are normally enemies will be together. They'll live in peace. Okay, kind of a two-part prophecy, absolutely. The first one, a shoot will come up from the stump of Jesse. That one, what what is that referring to? That's telling us where which family the Messiah will be born in. Who is Jesse? Anybody remember? Somebody alluded to this earlier. This is a different way of saying that the Messiah, the Christ, will come from the family, the lineage of David. Jesse was David's father. And the the picture here is you cut down a tree. There's a stump, and you've seen this a lot of times. If you don't kill that stump, David's dad, thank you, yes. Oftentimes, a branch or a tree will come right out of that stump and it'll thrive and grow. And that's what's happening here from the from the stump of of Jesse, David's father. Here comes the Messiah. He's going to come from the lineage of David. See that connection, this huge, powerful, wonderful king? That's who the Messiah will, that's whose line he will come from. And then this other part over here, this two-part prophecy that's talking about the hand, the child will put their hand in a viper's nest, not be hurt. What is it? A calf and the lion and the yearling together? The cow will feed with the bear. Their young will lie down together. See, those animals are enemies. One eats the other. One's a prey, the other one a predator. This is talking about a time of peace, a time that I don't think will happen until the second coming of Christ, but it's a promise. A promise of a time when God's kingdom will rule on earth and we won't have enemies anymore. Someone like this did not come, but the Assyrians came. They took the northern tribes into exile in Assyria. The Messiah still didn't come, but the Babylonians did, and they defeated the southern kingdom. They absolutely destroyed the temple. They they tore down the great buildings of Jerusalem. And the last of of the southern kingdom went into exile in five hundred and eighty six B.C., five hundred and eighty six years before the death, I'm sorry, before the birth of Christ. The prophet who was prophesying at five eighty six was Jeremiah. And here he's going to give us some words of hope. Hear this. This is, let me grab this one. This is Jeremiah twenty-three, verses five and six. Jeremiah says, the days are coming, declares the Lord, when I will raise up for David a righteous branch, a king who will reign wisely and do what is just and right in the land. In his days, Judah will be saved, the southern kingdom, and Israel will live in safety. In other words, both the south and the north will be redeemed. This is a name by which he will be called, the Lord, our righteous Savior. Now see, that's interesting about Jeremiah. He kept saying, you got to turn back to God or you're going to be taken away. You're going to be taken into exile. And as soon as they were taken into exile, he shifted gears and it was like God has not stopped loving you. God will continue to love you. In fact, God will send someone to save you. I have one more passage. And this one is not the prophecy of the birth of the Messiah, but it is definitely a prophecy about the way the Messiah will govern. People weren't sure, and what they were hoping for in the time of Christ was a king who would destroy the Romans, defeat them like a military leader. So listen at this. This is this is from Zechariah, chapter nine, verse nine. And somebody tell me how Jesus fulfills this prophecy, Jesus of Nazareth. Rejoice greatly, daughter Zion. See your king comes to you righteous and victorious, lowly and riding on a donkey, on a colt, the foal of a donkey. So tell me, how did Jesus fulfill that? We know that he did. This Messiah didn't come for after at this time almost six hundred years, but he is coming. And how did Jesus fulfill that prophecy in Zechariah? In fact, there's a there is a Sunday that we celebrate in the church that anytime I'm anytime I'm talking about that Sunday, I like to read Zechariah nine, nine. Thank you, riding into Jerusalem. We call that Palm Sunday. And that was when Jesus really declared himself the king. See, here I come, your king, riding into Jerusalem, Palm Sunday. Thank you. He rode on a donkey on Palm Sunday, showing that he came in peace. When David went in to fight a battle, he was on a horse. When he came in in peace, riding on a donkey or a mule. And so here he comes into Jerusalem. This is Jesus declaring himself the Messiah, the Christ. It was a very, very bold move. Yeah, it's humble in that he's coming in peace, but it's very, very powerful. Again, the people of Jesus's time, the Pharisees, the Sadducees, the scribes, teachers of law, those people expected the coming of a Messiah, but they had something totally different than Jesus in mind. Here's the here's the here's the application for us. Here we are in Advent. We're preparing ourselves to receive again the Christ child. I would challenge us, I challenge me, stop and think what and who is Jesus really like? If Jesus were to come right now, what would he what would he commend about me? And what would he say? David, you're missing the mark. We we've got this image. Sometimes I think I've created in my head what the Christ is like, what Jesus is like, and I may be wrong. We should let him proclaim himself. We should let the Christ, through the Holy Spirit, show us what Jesus is really like, and that's the one that we should follow. Be open as we go through Advent to meet the real Christ and to be confronted by Christ and to hear his teachings that stir us and give us uncomfortable things to do, uncomfortable assignments, pulling us away from those places where we're comfortable and sending us to do things that are not comfortable at all. Jesus, the Christ, the Messiah is counter-cultural. We won't be the most popular if we follow Christ. But oh, my goodness, what a gift, the gift of eternal life as we do follow him. Hope that this Advent is a good season for you, and I look forward to next Wednesday. Remember, I said this perhaps before some of you got on, because I'm I've got a conflict with a choir practice for our Christmas program for next Wednesday. Our study will start at six o'clock. We'll go from like six to six forty-five Eastern time. And it'll be on Facebook Live, and if you miss it, it'll it'll be on Facebook, on our Facebook page as a as a saved video so you can can watch it. But I hope you can be on at six because I love the interaction with you. Well, good night, everybody. God bless you all. Hope to see you next Wednesday.